Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, January 31st, 2023 Business Meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have a quorum as well. We met earlier this evening for a briefing from the Washington State Office of Independent Investigations. No decisions were made. It was just a briefing. We have an, oops, we don't need to prove the agenda yet because we have an announcement from our police chief, Rich Allen.
Thank you. For the record, Rich Allen, Police Chief. Tonight, I speak on behalf of members of the Olympia Police Department. We share in the nation and our communities disgust at the vicious beating of Tyree Nichols at the hands of Memphis, Tennessee, police officers. The brutality and the flagrant disregard for Mr. Nichols' humanity sickened us all. The individuals involved have betrayed their oath of office. They have tarnished the image of the badge, and they have brought disgrace to our profession. I applaud the Memphis Police Chief and the prosecuting attorney for their quick and decisive action in terminating and charging the officers, and I urge their continued and consistent transparency with their community as the events continue to unfold. Our profession is filled with individuals who are dedicated to preserving peace, serving the community, and protecting the innocent. The individuals responsible for Mr. Nichols' death represented none of these values. The comfort they displayed while beating another human being on camera, in my opinion, is indicative of a sick culture that is failing their community. As the police chief here in Olympia, I am proud of the culture that we have established. We are committed to treating all members of our community with dignity and respect. Through the reimagining process, our community has shared what it needs and expects from our public safety system. We are committed to the constant evaluation of our culture and practices to ensure our department reflects the values of our community and the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any additional comments from the dais tonight? Mayor Potem Gilman?
I really appreciate the statement, Chief Allen, and I just want to say that besides feeling terrible about the loss and agreeing about those officers who were involved, I also think that we have to keep reimagining public safety and looking structurally. That hotspot teams, I don't think, represent our values. No-knock searches, I don't think, represent our values. And a lot of these are changes we've already made locally, but they're not made across law enforcement. And so I just want us to both be concerned about the individuals who took those actions, but also be concerned about the structure and the supervisors who sent them out in a position to take those actions.
Thank you. Councilmember Payne?
Yes, so I haven't, I have not watched the video, and I feel that I'm kind of at a loss for words. I think that, given what I know about this situation, to see black officers kill a black man, you would assume that this isn't a race problem, right? That this is just about policing culture. But I want to stress something that I think is extremely an important point to make about this, which is that just because the officers were the same race as the victim does not excuse this behavior. It certainly doesn't mean that we get to look the other way about issues in race and policing in this country. And for me, it actually speaks to a greater point about how racism in this country is so entrenched in who we are as Americans that we hate ourselves, that black men who are in uniform would do this to one of our own. And it's, excuse me, it's just very, very emotional for me. It's emotional for a lot of people, and it's terrible to know that this is happening, and it has to stop.
Thank you. Councilmember Partially?
Well, I'm not sure I can add much more, except for to thank the chief for coming up and saying the things you've said, and to point out culture one more time. That is something that gets embedded in an organization and can be very difficult to root out. But we have to look to our leadership and look to our reimagination process, and it's going to take us continued work to make sure the culture in our department stays healthy. And we are ever vigilant for that culture, because this is not something that we can just take for granted. So thank you for your words, and thank you, Councilmember Payne, for your words. And I did watch it, and I'll never watch it again.
I think that we've said what we need to say, and again, I just thank Councilmember Payne for putting words that, you know, only you could say for us. And anyhow, our hearts are with you. And thanks to our chief for being able to speak about something that's unspeakable. So with that, I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We have an agenda. We are going straight to public comment. We had nobody sign up in person, but we have two remote speakers this evening. Rules are just the same. There's going to be a countdown clock that'll show on the screen. You have two minutes, and you can speak to anything that's regarding city business, as long as it doesn't pertain to an upcoming public hearing or one that we've had in the last 45 days. So with that, I will call forward Christina Daniels, followed by Bruce Wilkinson.
Christina's on.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I think I'm up. Everybody can hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Well, thanks for letting me speak tonight. And you probably remember I was here back in December for a different sort of topic and work group, but I just wanted to come and reintroduce myself. I am now representing the Thurston County Realtors Association. I'm one of two government affairs directors for our local association, and I get the privilege of being the point of contact or liaison for the city of Olympia. So we're looking forward to staying in touch around anything homeownership. I'm here to answer any questions for you. We would love to be a resource for you. We're doing lots of good things up on the Hill that you might be keeping tabs on in regards to homeownership. My other co-director, Chris Lester, is keeping tabs on the other municipalities as well. So we just look forward to continued partnership, and we want to thank you for your service as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Bruce Wilkinson. Hey.
I'd like to say thanks. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
My name is Bruce Wilkinson. I'm here to ask for justice from the city council. On October 17th, I had a 1989 F-700 dump truck that was burned down, and it was the target of arson downtown, and it's done open investigation. And as the victim here, I lost my savings and ability to work independently in the summer. And what happened next, though, was much worse for me. After having already been the victim of a crime, I'm facing a towing bill, which if not paid means I lose my driver's license, which means I will not be able to keep my job as a public school bus driver. And why did my vehicle get towed? Because the city decided to make a complaint to itself about it from one department, I believe it's the Olympia Police Department, to another parking services. And why they went out of their way in targeting my vehicle, a vehicle that is evidence in an open arson investigation which parked on private tucked-away industrial land, I'm not sure. The towing cost for two hours of work was $1,436.40. That's $718.20 per hour, which I think is an obscene charge. Then there is the $89 per day cost to park it, and you could compare that to $49 per night to get a room at Motel 6. But that comes with a continental breakfast, a shower, bed, and three parking days. So keep in mind, I incurred this $5,728.40 bill that will take away my driver's license, leaving me unemployed for doing absolutely nothing after being the victim of a crime. And what I'm asking for tonight is for the council to require the city to fix this now, saving my job as a school bus driver. And thank you. I appreciate your support.
Thank you. That concludes public comment this evening. And, sorry, it's inhaled. Something weird. I have our city manager ready to respond for Mr. Wilkinson, and they'll open it up to the dais if they have any other questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I am gathering some additional details in terms of what's going on with Mr. Wilkinson's case. I have some of the story. I'm still gathering some additional details on the rest of the story. I received his email today as well, and as I have those, I will share those out with councilmembers.
Thank you. Any other comments from the dais? Mayor Potem Gilman?
Thanks. First, to Ms. Daniels, you know, I had a conversation today about, so what else can we do that we're not doing now around housing that's not already part of Department of Commerce's suite? And I think that the realtors definitely need to be part of that conversation. So I appreciate the reach out today. And then to Mr. Wilkinson's situation, I appreciate, Jay, that you're going to take a look. And the lens that I would use is that I think that there's still an equity issue where when it's essentially an investor in the city, when it's a large project or a large property owner, we try to counsel them into compliance. And this is, to me, this is similar to our decision to stop bringing people to jail for outstanding warrants or driving with a suspended license, that I think we're more heavily penalizing the folks who have the least capacity and who are most strongly impacted by the fines. So I just ask that we use that lens as we consider this situation of what might we do to create sort of a solution that takes care of the specific problem that parking and police saw, but doesn't so severely impact a community member. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thanks for that. And we will move on to adopting tonight's consent calendar. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or polls? I have a few. I have pulling for C, D, and E, which are motions to adopt work plans for our three council committees. And then I have 4O, which is just a comment as well on amending our time that we start our council meetings starting next week. So I will go first to 4C, which is the approval of the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee's work plan. And I have the chair of that committee, Councilmember Quinn.
Hey, folks. So I hope that you've gotten a chance to review the Community Livability and Public Safety Committee, or sometimes we call it CLIPS, 2023 Work Plan. Just wanted to highlight a couple of, or I guess a few things that are pretty exciting that the council has wanted to work on, been working on, or expressed interest in at the retreat. And I think that we've done well thus far to arrange it into our work plan with some outstanding items to be scheduled. So in April, we will be seating our first Cultural Access Advisory Committee, so that's really, really exciting. There was kind of a joke made about how every year we seem to seat a new committee. So not something we're reaching for, but really cool work that we'll be doing soon here. And then also in June, you'll see that we have an update. We'll be updating our Sanctuary City action items. And just to be clear, we are a sanctuary to two, I believe. So the sanctuary city that I'm referring to is about reproductive health, sanctuary city to that. So that is something that we had claimed last year and made a statement on. And so in June, it'll be about time to look at what progress have we made and what do we plan to do so that we can really put into action and to words to our community members, what does it really mean to be a sanctuary city to reproductive health? Also, in September, we will have some recommendations from our contractor about what youth council models may make sense for the city of Olympia. Also would be a first for the city to have a youth council. So very exciting stuff. And then further, these are additional sort of findings and recommendations, but I think they are pretty substantial and really speaks to the type of issues that our city organization willingly takes on. So one of them is discrimination assessment findings and recommendations that Toby Hill Meyer is doing a lot of work on. And then also, we'll have the chief back again. We get to see him a few times throughout the year. But for the Olympia Police Department, staffing study findings, but this one's special because it's findings and recommendations. So looking forward to that. You'll see that we have the jail discussion and then the Olympia Downtown Improvement District to be scheduled. Those are big items, too, so it's sort of pending a few things to come. And then lastly, I'll say that there are four items under our council study session, so really trying to be mindful of what is really items that have broad council interest and trying to include you in all of our work from the start. So hope you can appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Quinn? All right. Next, we'll go to item 4D, which is the Finance Committee's work plan. And we have our chair, Councilmember Partial.
Thank you. I'm just going to call out a few things. It appears to be a year where we're going to be covering the transportation revenue and including pavement management and sidewalk revenue streams, as well as climate. We're going to be starting to tackle the referral from last year on how do we fund sustainably the climate process. And then in May, depending upon the outcome of the vote, we will be tackling what do we need to do post RFA vote, whether that's standing up a commission or looking into our own general fund. There are quite a few things that we know we need to tackle, so this is going to be kind of a living document, including funding of a youth council and city usage of women, minority, veteran businesses, so that we include DEI in our contracting partners, which we hope we'll continue working with Councilmember Quinn on. And my favorite, on July, we'll be looking at how is Jazzcom Assessment put forward for budget and, you know, looking to the sustainability of that in the future.
I think it's, any questions for Councilmember Partially? All right, we're going on to item 4E, and that is the Land Use and Environment Committee Work Plan, and the chair of that is Councilmember Madron.
So as it goes, every year with land use, we have a very, very packed work plan with a lot of topics that are of great importance to this council and to the entire community. Just highlighting a few of them, we're going to have multifamily tax exemption come around, looking at the results of that study and the additional questions that we had after the study session. That should be coming back around late March. Looking at April, we've got building code updates, which is where we're talking about building electrification and, well, all the other general code updates that are expected. But we're also going to be looking at how far beyond the commercial requirements we want to go. Also potentially looking at EV charging requirements. We also have the Phase II housing study, which, you know, Clark, you were just describing in your response to Ms. Daniels, you know, what are we not doing that's, you know, not part of the body of work at Department of Commerce that we could be doing to increase housing options in Olympia? So figuring out what the scope of that study is going to be. Then we got Capital Mall Triangle Subarea Plan, you know, southeast annexation. Next month, we have sidewalk maintenance. I'm looking at policies around that, looking further into rental housing actions. That includes rental registry and, you know, following up on anything that comes out of the legislature later on, looking at what a potential residential retrofit strategy would look like for getting people off of natural gas, looking at barriers to urban agriculture. I will say, there are a couple of things that have already come off our work plan since this has started, or at least one thing, one thing's come off. And that's because it's going to come to the full council as a study session, and we don't want to duplicate things. And that is going to be the greenhouse gas inventory and carbon wedge analysis. So one last thing on our work plan, I'm sure we'll find something to put in its place. But we have quite a few things on here, and one thing that we did discuss as a committee was maybe occasionally doing a 12:00 PM meeting in addition to the one that we do in the evenings, which has moved to the fourth Thursday, so that it's not back-to-back with finance. But occasionally doing a noon time meeting to be able to not have three-hour meetings in the evenings. So, you know, of course, this will be noticed as appropriate by staff when we decide that we're going to be going through this at our next meeting and trying to find some topics we might want to pull to have at a different time, just so we can manage this workload.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Madron? I was looking at it, Councilmember, and it is packed. And your list of things to be scheduled is quite long.
We don't look at that list.
Oh, my gosh. So I just want to note for our city manager that at a judge's head, if there are some other ones that you could just pull to the full council that you think would be beneficial, I think we have a little capacity for other business items. Yeah. All right. All right. Councilmember Quinn?
I just have a quick question. So I know these are to be scheduled as far as the noon sessions, but are you saying that there will be some Thursdays where you meet at noon and then at 5:30?
No.
Okay.
It would be another day, but sometime in the same month. So, I mean, we've got a lot of, a lot of days where we have three things scheduled, and these can often be lengthy conversations. So we'll look over this and say, those look like three heavy topics. We're going to pull one of those, and we're going to find a time, not the same day as the rest of the meeting, but sometime, you know, nearby, enough time for staff to prepare, time when we're all available to be able to move something off of a heavy night.
Sounds like a lot of P1s.
Priority ones.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a couple other polls for comment. Next, we'll go to item 4J, and that is regarding water and water rights and all that. Oh, there she is. So yes, so item 4J is approval of a resolution authorizing an agreement between the cities of Olympia, Lacey, and Tumwater for transfer of assets related to the brewery well field.
Wow.
Yes.
That's a lot. I'm Susan Clark for the record. I am serving as the interim drinking water director. In 2009, Tumwater, Lacey, and Olympia, we successfully transferred water rights from the former Olympia brewery. Our initial agreement established a one-third share for each of those three partners, plus not only the share in the water rights, but there's also land and infrastructure associated with that property. This initial agreement didn't allow for flexibility. In other words, one-third, one-third, one-third. This particular MOA, memorandum of agreement that's before you tonight, does two things. First of all, it requires Olympia and Lacey to reimburse Tumwater for some costs that they have had, costs associated with consultant fees, plus they've been paying for stormwater fees on property that we jointly own. So together, or actually ourselves, we owe about $42,000 to Tumwater for those. The MOA also allows for flexibility in that ownership share. It allows any of the three partners to transfer its ownership share if they so desire, and it allows a partner or partners to accept that ownership share. It doesn't require any party to transfer or accept. It's voluntary. At this particular point in time, Olympia does not intend to either accept or, not reject, but make available our share. So at this point, we are continuing to assume our third share. And that means costs associated with development will also be one-third. We currently have a water system plan, a draft water system plan, that's before our regulator for review. We're regulated by the Washington State Department of Health. There are a lot of requirements associated with that water system plan. One of the things we have to do is show our demands versus our supplies, and we have to show both a six-year and a 20-year look, making sure that we have supplies available for that growth. We also look out 50 years. We have a comprehensive plan policy that requires us to have a reserved water supply for up to 50 years worth of growth. So we actually look out 50 years. Right now, we can meet our 50-year growth demands based on our existing supplies, excluding the brewery well field. We cannot meet our 50-year supply if the McAllister well field is offline for some reason. Our McAllister well field supplies about 75% of our water needs. So our draft water system plan does continue to include development of the brewery well field as part of our long-term supply. And it's included there to make sure we can have a 50-year supply, have that reserved for our growth. And it also is within our supply portfolio to make sure that we have a level of redundancy or protection against risk in case our McAllister well field is offline for some reason. So at this point, I've stayed pretty high level. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions for Susan? Mayor Potem Gilman?
I know, I'm full of questions tonight. Susan, I'm just trying to understand what prompted this memorandum. Was it that Lacey and Olympia were not kicking in to help pay those costs that Tumwater was fronting, or is there some other change in the agreement?
That's only one of the items that's covered by the agreement. So of course, we have to pay back Tumwater for those costs. But it was also to allow the flexibility. As an example, Lacey is interested in having a conversation about transferring its ownership share.
So we didn't, in the initial agreement, at the point of condemnation, we didn't have that ability to trade capacity, trade shares around?
Exactly. It was established at a third each.
Thank you, Susan.
Yep.
All right. Take that, Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you, Susan. So I'm not 100% sure I understand. So if a party decides to give up their water right, or another party needs one, and they, you know, it's a negotiation between two of the three, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
And then they would bring that proposal. If we were the, you know, the one out, we would have 15 days to object.
Correct.
And then the water rights would be transferred to one other party rather than going in the pot and being split by two again.
Right. We can participate in that conversation in the beginning, but we don't have to. We're not obligated to accept any of that water right.
Okay.
Yeah, that's available. That may be available.
So I'll apologize for not bringing this up to you earlier. I feel like there needs to be more process around dispute with two parties and one owning 66%. Like, if you've gone into that situation, it could be a lot more sticky than the dispute process that's laid out here, if one wanted to develop and the other didn't. Or I'm trying to come up with hypotheticals, but just to say that out loud. But otherwise, I appreciate your report.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Susan. I understand it better now. Yeah, water rates are always a little confusing.
Yeah, always.
Always. Okay, thank you. It's not just me. All right. And then one last comment was on item 40, which is approval of an ordinance amending Olympia Municipal Code Section 2.04.050 relating to city council meetings. And so we have made a decision to try something new in '23, and that is to amend our start time to 6:00 PM. So instead of 7:00 PM, we'll be starting our council meetings at 6:00 PM. So we just want to let our community members know that, and we will be doing a social media and other outreach communication. social media and other outreach communication so that people know when to come in, to sign up for public comments, say. As well, our study sessions will also go from 5:30 to 6 o'clock. So, all of our meetings will be at 6:00 PM, which makes it a lot simpler to schedule. So, with that, any questions regarding that? All right, we have a motion, a second, to adopt our consent calendar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. That takes us to other businesses this evening. We only have one item, and that's item 6A, and that is to receive a briefing on our housing and homeless response efforts. And it's my pleasure to invite forward Darian Lightfoot, who is our Director of Housing and Homeless Response, and she'll soon be joined by Meg Martin, who's the Executive Director of Interfaith Works, to get some great updates on what we're doing. Take it away.
Hello, my name is Darian Lightfoot, Director of Housing and Homeless Response. Sheher, thank you so much for having me this evening. I was here in October and gave a pretty extensive update of the Housing and Homeless Response program. This is just some highlights, a few takeaways, a few new projects, and then I'll kick it over to Meg to talk about Sergio's. All right, so, just want to highlight some of the pillars of the housing program, how we focus, divert resources, and how we really feel this is a multi-pronged approach, needing to move all the elements of housing and homeless response forward to make an impact in our community. So, I'm going to go through several of those, talk about what we're doing, updates, and then go from there. Immediate encampment efforts. I know we've talked about the closure of Enson already, the movement to Quinn Street Village. That's still going really well. A few last things for Quinn Street Village that we need to do to wrap up the project, laundry, paving, et cetera, but that's going really well. 100-person occupancy, Catholic Commies Services doing a really great job. Next, I want to highlight the right-of-way projects that are going on. We have five established encampments that will be closed over the next several months. Lily and Pacific have already been closed, really still working on city center, a few folks remaining there, and then that encampment will be closed. And following will be Slater, Kenny, and Wheeler. Those are two of the larger encampments that are in Thurston County, and those are looking to be closed once we have available housing, so the communities can really move together. We saw that with Enson, when folks are able to stay in community with people they know, people who are able to support them and help keep them safe, then we see folks stay in housing longer and feel safer in community. So, as we have our two projects, the Tiny Home Village and the purchase of the hotel go live, both of those encampments will be closed. Another note with Wheeler, in the next few weeks, there will be a large clean of the camp, both on the interstate side and on the Wheeler side, just to make things safer and cleaner. So, we'll be seeing that at the end of February. So, temporary housing to come, already mentioned this, Franz Anderson 50-unit tiny home village that's going to be set up on one side of the parcel, that's moving along. Our stellar public works team is extending the right-of-way, really working hard, joining the fun, sort of seen in that there. The purchase of the Days Inn Hotel in Lacey, they closed on Friday. Woo! Operated as an enhanced shelter, again, that will be a space for folks at Wheeler or Slater Kenny to move to the hotel together, operate as enhanced shelter operated by Lehigh. Hope Village, I just want to highlight here, they're expanding their tiny home shelter by two units. Love our faith partnerships, hoping to engage more faith communities and have tiny home shelters on the site, just more opportunities to offer folks shelter. Envelope of occasions, just looking to plug here, they are operating at our temporary shelters, at our tiny home villages, engaging folks, and that program's been really successful. Housing preservation, I, you know, I've said it before, I'll say it again, the cheapest and easiest to occupy housing is the housing that is built. So, preserving our low-income affordable housing is really, really important. I want to highlight a rapid capital housing acquisition project after this slide, but these are just programs that the city has in-house to really preserve our affordable housing. Critical home repair with Rebuilding Together South Sound and Habitat for Humanity, along with the revolving loan fund. I met with the Executive Director of Rebuilding Together, and she says, with larger local investment, they were able to double their critical home repair program in 2022. So, keeping folks with disabilities and people aging in place in their home has been a huge cornerstone of their program. Rental protections, a lot going on at Land Use, you heard, with rental protections. So, we're doing a victory lap there. Ordinances were adopted at the end of last year, bringing back the landlord registry, hoping to make it really robust and a space for landlords to access information and a place for renters to be able to know their rights, know access of rental opportunities in the community, and just really make our rental community strong, as we are a majority rental community. And again, the multifamily tax exempt and study, along with policies and recommendations coming out of that in the spring. Permanent housing, my favorite slide. Unity Commons Phase Two looking to be closed in April, and will start construction, 64 units of permanent supportive housing. The Rapid Capital Acquisition Funding, this is a new piece of the state's portfolio to purchase housing, hotels, motels, apartments that aren't being used, and occupy it in six months. So, using what is already built. The housing authority submitted an application early January. We're feeling really good about the purchase of a motel, and should know about that at the end of February. The Landstall Apartments, awesome project that I'm just feeling so energized by. They're going in for the 4% Lytech Award at the end of March, and this is a property by the East Side Co-op. They are looking to build 162 units of 60% AMI housing, two, three, and four-bedroom units housing around 400 people, all at 60% AMI, solar-ready, heavey hookup, buy a grocery store, playground on site. I mean, it's the works. So, that's moving forward, want to highlight here. Franz Anderson Permanent Supportive Housing Project, the RFP will be released next month. And Homes First, the last home fund award that we just had in 2022, they're looking to purchase five homes and build five ADUs. They've purchased two of those and are in construction of the ADUs to densify the homes that they already own. Partnerships, this is something I have a lot of pride for, the housing program, we're really, really integrating with the climate program, solar installation at Coyote Village, looking to install solar on single-family homes owned by Homes First, the heat pump campaign that is coming on with a partnership of Habitat with Humanity and the LOT Clean Water Alliance, which launches February 7th, a 50% reduction in hookup fees when folks are looking to build affordable housing. This was new and really brought forward by LOT, and just shows a great partnership by a stakeholder that wants to play. They want to be involved in this work, and so I'm really excited about that. And I just want to highlight our regional effort, the Countywide Home Fund, we are now moving, the funds are combined. The 1406 Funds, we've also looked in the RHC ILA to include those as a regional source that's going to work just as the home fund, is a dedicated regional source that the body decides on where the projects go, not each jurisdiction. I mean, we're part of the home consortia. I just want to highlight these three funding sources that now all go through the Regional Housing Council for regional effort. The right-of-way initiative, both projects and the encampments being addressed, and I just want to say that as we work to really make the Regional Housing Council more robust, we will see combined applications like this moving forward, like the Landstall Apartments, like the Rapid Capital Housing Acquisition. We're able to make a larger impact with these really great collaborations. And speaking of great partnerships, Meg Martin is going to talk about Sergio's.
Before, can we, if there's any questions?
That was a really quick recap. Oh, my gosh, did you take a breath? I didn't, I was watching. She's not breathing, she's not breathing. But thank you, I also just, while you're up there, want to love on you and everything you're doing, because it was so amazing that it got the attention of our governor and Mrs. Insley, who came and paid us a visit on Friday here in this very chambers to learn about these programs and how a city like us that punches above their weight is doing what every other city could do if they had more people like you and a home fund. So, anyhow, I just want to really, really hold you up in front of everybody. And Councilmember Drone was there, too.
I was there, yeah. I got to see this exact presentation before.
Did she time it a second?
And it was really great, actually, to have the governor here, to show him what it looks like with a city that is treating access to housing as a real emergency, like this body of work that you have led for us is just, it's really, really impressive. There were a few spoilers for my RHC report for later, but one thing I did want to note was, you know, when we met last, I mentioned that at the RHC, there was a decision to be made about the Landstall Apartments on whether or not half of the 5% match would be met by the RHC, and it was decided that they would. So, we're putting in half, they're putting in half, it might be grant, might be a loan, all that's to be decided, but that project, that won't be a barrier to this project, other things could come up. But, you know, I just wanted to give that little bit of news here, so, thank you for all your work, Darian.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Cooper, Councilmember Payne? See, lots of people want to talk to you.
I just want to echo the accolades. I'm just so proud of where we are and where we've come from, and to have someone like you standing here as a director of a department, it's like night and day, and you can see it, you can see it on the ground in the community. Obviously, people are still struggling, but we're making incremental progress every single day, and it's because of your leadership and other people on the city team, so, thank you, thank you, thank you. And I think she just beat Brian Wilson Energy. Like, I haven't seen that, right?
It's a reference.
We have to go watch some tapes and just like compare, but I think we have a new bar for city presentation.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, next I have Councilmember Payne, followed by Councilmember Partially.
Yes, hi, Darian. Every time you present to us about what's going on, it's great, because it's just like, you see it, you feel it, we're getting there. So, thank you, and same, everything that's been said, yeah, thank you. I do have a question about, if you could just speak maybe a little bit to operations of all of these different facilities, and how, you know, what does the entrance process look like? Is it low barrier? Could you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, absolutely. They vary. The Phase Two of Unity Commons, low barrier, permanent supportive housing. The Landstall Apartments, 60% AMI, and it will be just traditional market-rate housing with an exception of that income cap. So, each of the projects have its different, it varies on where it can meet residents as far as their housing needs, and that is, it's really important for a community that needs units in all variety of income levels. And so, you know, speaking of capacity, when the governor was here, he asked, what's our biggest need in our community? And I felt strongly that support for our providers is a huge need. We're feeling, we're seeing the capacity of our providers really struggle because of retention, because of burnout, because of a variety of projects needing subject matter experts to lead these housing projects forward. And so, having that really robust investment into our local providers is a huge need, because we can, I can do these slides and I can apply for the grant, but I can't operate the housing, and so we need to rely and trust on the subject matter experts to do that in all of these, in all of these projects. So, I hope that answered your question.
It does answer my question, thank you. And I just want to say, it's really important for these places to be low barrier, specifically for, you know, reasons that come to mind, like Tenino, for example, who's going through, you know, a situation with sex offenders and things like that. And human beings deserve the dignity of having a roof over their heads. You know, this idea that we perpetually punish people, and as if it's a preference for them to be out on our streets doesn't make sense to me. They should be housed. And so, any opportunity that we have to create more facilities for people to be low barrier is extremely important, so that we don't have people on the streets in our community, but they're given a place to live their lives. So, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Thank you, and then Councilmember Partially.
I totally agree, Councilmember Payne. I just want to say, time warp, from when I first got on council to now, wow, thank you. And I certainly hope Jay and the mayor and Danny said to the governor, you can't have her. She is Olympias, because you are a gem, and you're just amazing. I did have actually one serious question. On Franz Anderson, what are you looking for, for target number of units at that point? Do you know yet? Are you waiting for RFP?
For the tiny home village or for the permanent supportive housing?
Permanent supportive housing.
Ideally, I'm really hoping for a phased approach, very similar to Unity Commons in the lower hundreds of units. Yeah, with the 64 and 64 units for Phase One and Phase Two, I'm really hoping for something in the close to 100, low 100 units.
Thank you, and thank you for all the work you do for us.
Wonderful. And now, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Quinn.
I think the best way to show someone that they should stay somewhere is by valuing them in dollars and in work, so I'm really excited to see you be at the director level now, and I hope that you'll stay with us for a little bit of time, at least. So, I did want to ask, is there something that we can do for you?
Good question.
You could let me pass the mic to Meg.
Fair enough, fair enough. And now, it's my pleasure to invite forward, now it's my pleasure to invite forward someone that is well-known to all of us, truly a hero for the unhoused in our community, who has accomplished just over the moon and back projects, and has just been such a gift to our community here, and really, really excited to have you in front of us again, Meg, and tell us what your latest project is.
Yes, thank you so much. It's been, it's been a while. I was just talking earlier, I came up in a different conversation about the first time that I came to council, and I think that maybe you and Councilmember Cooper were the only ones still that were here then, but I, it was for a school requirement, and I had to come do public comment on an issue that mattered to me and did a comment on the importance of harm reduction services, and that was in 2011, I guess. And then that was sort of what started the, or 2012, maybe, and that's what started the trajectory of the shelter opening and partnering with Interfaith Works and all of that. So, I think I agree, we've come so far from that time, where there wasn't even a housing department, there wasn't dedicated funds for working on these issues, and so, it's a cool, cool night to be back and be in front of you. For anyone out watching who's not familiar, my name's Meg Martin, I'm the Executive Director for Interfaith Works, and we operate a continuum of homeless services here in the greater Olympia area, try to have options for people no matter where they might be, whether they're living unsheltered and needing support in replacing vital documents, getting access to emergency supplies, all the way up through supportive shelter 24/7, always low barrier. We were a leader in our community to bring that model forward. At Unity Commons, we have 58 beds, partnered with Low Income Housing Institute there, and we've got showers and laundry, a communal kitchen, gardens. We were lucky enough to be visited by the governor as well on Friday, and Mrs. Insley. And we have, six of those beds are for medical respite, and then we also provide all of the support services for the residents living in the 65 apartments upstairs. We've been part of many different efforts over the last decade or more, warming centers in various, you know, abandoned buildings, and partnering with churches and with various different partners. And so, we've had a lot of opportunity to learn, to grow, to try and learn what works and what doesn't, and to refine our services. And so, I'm really excited tonight to give you an update about Sergio's. And Sergio's is located at 3444 Martin Way, and it is the old Foam and Fabric Outlet for folks who might remember. And we have been working on this project for a couple of years. In late 2020, we were able to purchase the property, and that was predominantly through COVID relief funds, which I'm going to talk about a little bit, but it really has been truly a regional partnership. We had to demolish the existing structure, it would have taken far too much investment to bring it up to a livable building to rehab it. And we worked with a company based out of Canada predominantly that does all kinds of emergency hospitals, different types of modular buildings that can be put up quickly and used for many different uses, and it's called a sprung structure. And it's called a sprung structure. And so our intended use was to be able to use it as a bridge while Unity Commons was still getting finished, um, because at that time we were sheltering in two different churches. Um, and to provide a space for hazardous weather response and to provide a space for daytime respite and service connection since the Community Care Center was closed during the, the pandemic, um, for the drop-in services. So we have many funding partners. Um, thank you so much to the City of Olympia for your generous contribution to making this happen. Um, the City of Lacey and Tumwater also came to the table. Um, and then that county funding and the United Way money, that was all part of COVID relief funds. So targeted towards people that were at highest risk of contracting and dying from COVID-nineteen. Um, this was a public and private partnership. We do have investment from multiple private partners, including, um, some of the contractors that are working on the project that have felt really invested in, in the mission. Um, as you know, we've had a lot of delays, so I'm going to talk just a little bit about that. But we purchased the property in November of twenty-twenty. Um, we were planning to use it until Unity Commons was completed, but due to delays, Unity Commons got done first. Um, and we now have, I'm happy to report, our, um, temporary occupancy is completed. We had our first event at Sergio's for the point in time count. Um, thank you for those of you that, that came by. And I cannot tell you how great it felt to have that building full and, um, providing services. So quickly, because I'm ready for this chapter of my life to be done, I will go over some of the delays. Um, there were just a lot of, um, general delays related to the pandemic, um, materials procurement, supply chains. There was a very high turnover with the general contractor that we were working with. And so that made continuity of project management very difficult. Um, there were certain energy codes that changed, working just together. There was just essentially what my mom used to say, the old, anything that can go wrong will go wrong, sort of saying. And it felt like that at times. Um, we have though gotten through all of those things and I am very, very happy about that. So, these are actual photos of the, the building. Um, aerial photo here shows Mary Elder Road, um, behind, and Martin Way is down here at the bottom of the ramp. This is our designated outdoor area, um, where people will be able to be outside. Um, and this also helps us to manage impacts that might happen to surrounding neighboring properties. Um, this is a photo of the inside of the day room. And then also, of course, Councilmember Partially came for, um, veterinary services. And, um, Governor Insley is there as well. Can you remind me what that dog's name was again?
Um, uh, Prince Doobie.
Oh, that's right. Maybe I should have checked with you first before, before I asked you for that clarification.
You wanted to know the reason behind it, and he smiled.
Yes. Um, but we, we had so many amazing visitors, elected officials, of course, and, um, we had haircuts and all kinds of service providers that were there that day. And so it, it really felt great. Um, we have, if you've noticed from the road, there's the shipping container. And the shipping container goes to the, to the building, so you enter it from inside the building. But, um, on one side is toilets and sinks, and on the other side is showers and laundry. Um, and the bathrooms held up great, uh, during the event, and so I'm very, very happy about that. Um, there have been some silver linings of the challenges, um, and delays. Um, it gave us, if, if we had opened when we were supposed to, we would have been opening Unity Commons at essentially the same time, um, even with some of the earlier delays. But, um, that would have been really difficult to be trying to do both of those projects, getting them off the ground at the same time. So we now have almost, or over a year, um, under our belt at Unity Commons. And I think that's just really going to set us up for, for success. Um, we've also experienced severe staffing shortages throughout the pandemic and that's, um, made things just incredibly difficult. Um, and having this delay has allowed us for additional coordination. We're going to be able to partner with Valley View Health Services in a much more robust way than we were originally intending. Um, and with the decision to, um, fully close the Community Care Center, we're talking with, um, partners at Providence and other partners that were, um, a part of that to see how we can recreate some of that vital service connection. So we will be using this space as a daytime service center. Um, one of our lessons learned over the years is that we're going to start limited and grow, um, as we, as we get our feet under us. And so we'll be starting with services, uh, Tuesday through Friday from one to five PM to start. We'll have onsite medical, mental health and hygiene services. We will be able to provide hazardous weather, Code Blue pop-up shelter in that space and plan to do so. And, um, one of the coolest parts about this in terms of capacity for Interfaith Works is that this is the first property that we have fully owned ourselves. And so, um, this structure, while it is warranted for up to fifty years, it's a long-term thing. Um, it is also temporary. And so we can sort of dream about what we want for, for this property for the long term. And finally, um, I want to just talk about why we're naming it Sergio's. And some of you might recognize this handsome face, um, Sergio Hermio. He was, um, a resident of Olympia for, for decades. Um, he was somebody who was an amazing guitar player. He loved the Beatles, they're his favorite band. He would play them all the time to anyone who would listen. Um, and he was an undocumented person who was not really able to access any of the federal services that are provided, which includes Section Eight program, um, and other programs. And so the ability to, for him to move up and out of homelessness was extremely limited because of that. And so the services that we provided, um, low barrier, that were really open and allowed people of, um, regardless of their circumstance to access, was incredibly important, um, lifeline for Sergio over the years. Um, he got frostbite on one of his toes and within three years, he subsequently lost both of his legs. So that was through infections that wouldn't heal and they would spread. And he got frostbite on another one of his toes and the same thing happened. And so, um, he tragically passed away in twenty-nineteen. And we just hold him, um, very close in our heart and want to bring his spirit of hope and of music and art and light, um, despite incredible hurdles that he had to overcome into our space. And so we are honoring him by naming after him. So, that's all I have for you right now.
All right, I'm sure there's some questions and comments from up here. Uh, does anyone want to start? I've got a couple. I'll start with, um, Councilmember Payne, then Councilmember Madron.
Uh, just nothing but gratitude, Meg. Thank you so much for your work. Um, it's really, really special for us to have someone like you in this community doing this work. And I know it's not easy. I appreciate you being, uh, you know, sort of transparent about what the challenges were and how you're waiting for this part of your life to be over. But seriously, thank you for the work that you do and for sticking it out. It's a benefit to all of us.
Thank you. All right, next I have Councilmember Madron, followed by Councilmember Partially.
Nevertheless, she persisted. When I first met you, it was during the days of the People's House. And, um, through all this time to see all that you have accomplished. I know you have a team of people and a community behind you, but, um, you know, there's a common denominator and all that. And I'm looking right at it. And, um, your ability to persevere, to, to build relationships and to speak on really challenging issues in ways that are humanizing to all people involved, um, is really, really important. And it's really helped us as a city. And so, um, I just really value you. Um, I attended the, um, the neighborhood session where neighbors were invited to come in and just, people showed up and it was clear that, um, that there was a lot of trust for what you're doing. Maybe, maybe a bit of apprehension to see how everything rolls out, but also a lot of trust. And people know who they can reach out to if there are, um, any challenges associated with it. Um, I do have a question, um, uh, that I know the answer to, but I want everyone else to know it too. And it might be more a question for Mark Russell, uh, but I'll, I'll, I'll ask you and, and we'll see. But can you talk about the crosswalk, um, and how, like, the, the connection to the bus stops and crosswalks, uh, the crosswalk there and how people be able to cross the streets to safely access the shelter?
Yes, thank you so much for, for bringing that up. Um, and we did, we had a neighbor meeting, um, that we flyer'd probably over thirty businesses and different apartment complexes and stuff in the area. And the city, um, came out in very supportive ways. And so thank you all for, for all of that. It really made a huge difference. Um, one of the major challenges of the site is the pedestrian access is extremely limited, pretty much no matter how you slice it, no matter what way people might come to the building. And so, um, we have decided that pedestrian access will happen off of Martin Way. And the city is supporting us in trying to make that as safe as possible. So the closest bus stop heading towards Lacey is at Merritt Manor. Um, and so there's going to be a, I believe, temporary crosswalk at first that will go in with a, um, refuge in the middle. And then there'll be wayfinding from the crosswalk, um, wayfinding improvements leading up to Sergio's to show people that that's where we want, want them to go. There is a bus stop, um, on Mary Elder Road. It doesn't have a bus shelter, but we are hoping that we can just talk with people about utilizing that bus stop instead of the one closer to Lily Road, so that all of the pedestrian access to the building is happening kind of between Merritt Manor and Mary Elder.
I see Mark Russell coming up behind you to maybe fill in on some details. But while he's walking up, I'll just say that this is a, a, a flag for us that there's a lot of work that needed on Martin Way for pedestrian safety. And guess what? That's also on the land use work plan.
Good evening, council. For the record, I'm Mark Russell, interim public works director. And just to add a little bit more to what Meg already said about the crosswalk, um, we were glad to partner with, with her and her team. Um, we are going to be putting in a crosswalk where she described. Um, we're going to be putting in some temporary, um, barriers to draw attention to it. So temporary curbing and that type of thing to create, like we normally do, to create a, a refuge in the middle of the road. Um, at some point in the future, we can keep an eye on it and see if we can make those more permanent in nature. Um, we'll have pedestrian crossing signs that we can, that'll alert the drivers. There'll be, um, all sorts of, um, yellow paint and that type of thing to really draw attention to that crosswalk. Um, I'm happy to say that actually just yesterday, our, um, traffic operations crews stood up a streetlight on that corner to help with lighting as well. And we're also looking at whether we can do some, um, temporary tubular markers or things like that to create a barrier for pedestrians to walk along Martin Way. As Councilmember Madron said, Martin Way is on our list to look at and figure out how to make pedestrian and bicycle improvements more, um, accessible. And so until we get to that point, um, we're hoping this will help facilitate people crossing the street, um, on Martin Way, which is a busy intersection, create a little bit of a refuge in the middle of that wide road. Um, so they're not having to, um, facilitate both directions at once. And we'll keep an eye on it and see if there's any other improvements we can make as well, so. Hopefully that answers your question.
Any questions for Mark while he's up there? All right. Thank you. Uh, next we'll go on to Councilmember Partially, followed by Mayor Protem Gilman.
That was an excellent question, Councilmember Madron, getting across that street. Meg, I just have to say, um, I don't know if you remember this, but, uh, early in my career on council, you sat down with me, I spent an hour with you. And in that hour, I learned more about harm reduction, homelessness, medically assisted addiction services than I had learned in my lifetime. And I still remember that. I kept that napkin that I drew all these pictures on that you were madly telling me. And so I, I greatly appreciate your, your expertise and what you've brought to our city. I know this might be silly, but based on what you said about Sergio, is there any way to get a community art project on that building? Cause I think you could make it, you know, beautiful with community artists, you know, coming in and imagining what that looks like for hope.
I would love that, yeah. We, especially on the, on the conex, on the shipping container, cause it's just kind of a gray, big gray box that's on the front. And I think there could be some really cool art that happens there. But we have, um, these gorgeous portraits that were painted that were from photos. So this photo of Sergio, um, by an artist in Seattle named Nico Inzarella. And so we have, in one of the corridors at Unity Commons, we have probably eight of these amazing paintings that are of folks who've, who've passed away. And so we'll, we'll definitely incorporate some kind of art throughout the building as we're there because we need to make it feel like home.
Beauty, and that's soothing to the soul, too.
Yeah.
Just make a pitch for Inspire Olympia coming your way soon.
Love it.
All right, uh, Councilmember, uh, sorry, Mayor Protem Gilman, followed by Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you. If, if the praise keeps coming here and people keep mentioning harm reduction, we might come back and talk about safe injection sites. Just saying. It looks like the, the time might be ripe for that. Um, I, so, so first, I'm just thinking about Sergio on the sidewalk in front of First Christian Church. And as the time went along, um, losing part of a foot, then lower leg, then a leg, then the other leg. And, and I'm thinking about the cold weather we just had last month. And, um, the sidewalk in front of church, when I went in for the winter solstice service, was lined with people sitting outside waiting for the nighttime emergency, uh, shelter to open. So I was, I was unable to read between the lines and the communications that came from both Interfaith and the county about whether there were, um, daytime warming centers during that cold snap and whether there was adequate overnight capacity. And then I was quite surprised that the Regional Housing Council decided to dramatically reduce the budget for cold weather emergency. Um, could you just help me understand a little bit, speak for a moment about the capacity that Sergio's will add and where you think the need is compared to the capacity that we have right now?
Well, I think that one of the challenges with the capacity as it is now is that particularly with social distancing in the space that we have utilized historically at First Christian in the upstairs area, we only are, um, able to serve twenty-five people. Um, in the past years, um, we've been able to serve much more than that. Um, there have been times of cold weather where we've gotten over a hundred people into that space, um, which is hard to imagine, but we did it. Um, and so we, our fire code capacity for this facility is a hundred. I think that we can, with, with social distancing, safely, um, serve up to fifty people. And I think without that social distancing, we could get more like seventy-five. And I've been doing hazardous weather response, Interfaith Works has, for many years. And it is rare that we see over seventy-five folks, even in the most severe weather, um, in the heart of downtown. And I think that that's, I have a lot of reasons why I think that that has been that way. But I think we'll be able to accommodate the people that need to be accommodated for the hazardous weather. Um, the hazardous weather response in general is tough because you're essentially standing up a full program in sometimes hours' notice. And so it is hard to staff it. It does take a lot to, to stand it up. Um, but I believe that it's a vital, a vital service. This year, um, during that cold snap, there was day center, um, resources that the, the city homeless response team really took the lead on and opened up the and opened up the old fire hall, which we've done, done before. Um, so we, we hope to help be a part of that effort as well with Sergio's.
Thank you and congratulations. And after about a year, I stopped calling it a pop-up shelter you were putting up.
Yeah, that's fair.
All right. Next I have, uh, council member Cooper.
I wanna start by thanking Interfaith Works, honestly, because for their whole history, they've been the responder in our community, whether it's starting the food bank or building a homeless services system when the community needed it and the volunteers got tired. And it, it's, it's significant. So I wanna please pass that along to your board and your members, how much the community appreciates them. And, and especially for seeing you as the strong leader that you are. Uh, you know, you, you brought back a wave of emotion when you mentioned twenty-twelve. I had no idea, when I sat down as a new council member, that in my first month, I'd be crying on the dais because you and your crew brought the humanity of lives lost on the street into this room. And we had, you know, through the course of that year, a fork in the road and a choice to make as a city. And it took us a minute to do it. And it's, and I, and I venture to guess, when you look back fifty years, this dozen years will be some of the hardest years that government has ever had, let alone the, the people, right, that live here and the struggles that they've gone through. And, you know, the, the, the ability to now go from activists to building brick and mortar, to running so many staff and taking care of so many people. I, you know, I think the outcomes will be the, the proof in the pudding for this conversation because they're, they're happening every day. We owe you a huge debt of gratitude. Huge. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And I'm gonna stop because I'm gonna start bawling. But I think we have more places to go and more people that we can see that the city could have a role in. And I'll just lift up the comment, you know, half, half joking, but a lot of seriousness that the mayor Protem made. It's time to have a conversation about safe injection and Olympia might be a place to do that.
When are you up for reelection?
Let's look for. I think the voters would support it. Uh, we could put it to them. But let's, look, keep looking for the improvement opportunities and the partnership opportunities to build and do more and keep, for me, that mantra of the most vulnerable as the driver for the policy is, is really what makes it possible. So, thank you.
Uh, so on that note, I lost my train of thought. Um, oh yes, graciously tenacious. I've used that term before. And you are the epitome of what that means to me. You don't give up, but you also just always stay, um, just full of grace. And, and look what you've accomplished. And I also want to remark on the trajectory of where we are now and that we're not in this alone anymore as a city. In fact, that you got some money from our neighboring cities to help with the, the, uh, the sprung sco, uh, the sprung building.
Sergio's.
Sergio's, of course called Sergio's, yes. Uh, structure, sprung structure. Uh, yes, is a testament also to, uh, the trust that people have in you and what you, your, your track record of success shows that, um, our community members understand and so do our neighbors. Um, one question though, I don't wanna give you another heart attack, but is this really, is something you can like take down and move like the Cirque du Soleil tent somewhere else? If you want to build there and then you were like, hey, we got the structure. Can we move it to another piece of property?
Theoretically, yes.
Not in your lifetime.
But yeah, that was another one of the main reasons that we made this investment. Um, it is, because of the site that we're on, it did require concrete slab. And so, that would be sort of the big, the big barrier for moving it is if we would require pouring another concrete slab, which can be expensive somewhere else. But, but yeah, that's one of the, the selling points of it is that it could be, it could be used again somewhere else.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that. Um, and I think we are done with our, our comments and questions. All right. Thanks again, Meg.
Could I just say one thing? I know this ran kind of longer than, but I, I really wanna thank you all for, for your support. Um, not only of the work that I've done and that Interfaith Works has done and all of our member communities who've stepped up, like you said, time and time again. Um, but I think that it's just, I can't tell you how relieving it is to hear conversations about best practices and about, um, working towards solutions that are effective, humane, and the most cost-effective. Um, because we have not been there in the past. And I'm really excited to see where things are moving in the future. And I wanna thank you all for helping, um, to bring along, um, those of us that have been, um, fighting for people like Sergio for a very long time to help us better understand how to have a seat at the table and how to, um, interact in a way that can make those big things like brick and mortar, like land, like all of that happen. And, um, I wouldn't have been able to, to do that without guidance and without support. So, I really wanna thank everybody in this room that's, that's done that for me over the years.
Yeah, wonderful. Well, have a great evening.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Get some rest, cause it looks like it's gonna be a lot of work. Uh, all right, so. That concludes our regular, uh, part of our business meeting. We have council member reports. I will start just with the reminder that we will be meeting next week at six P M., which will be our new time to meet going forward on Tuesday nights. And then I'll go to my far right, council member Madron.
You always start to the far right. That didn't come out how I meant, but you just often come to this side first.
Are you typecasting me?
So, the land use and environment committee met on the nineteenth. Uh, we had our annual code enforcement update, um, with Eric Jensen this time. Um, I think the most notable code enforcement issue that was brought to our attention was, um, five nineteen Puget Street. So, um, you know, we got some, uh, some of their perspective on that and some of the other things that they've been working on throughout the year, um, and their, uh, their work to bring together the vacant property registration program. Um, we also, uh, got, um, the report on the southeast annexation feasibility analysis. Um, there's, there's some more work that, uh, the land use committee has asked of the, of the staff and consultants to be able to, uh, feel clear about, uh, the decision before us around annexation of that part of Olympia. And so that it will come up again, uh, in the land use work plan. Uh, one of the big question marks around there is, um, uh, you know, what happens with the RFA and how that impacts everything. So, um, there's kind of a wait and see thing going on, but there were some other things that we'd like some more information on. Um, and so that will come back around to us. Um, and then, um, the regional housing council met, um, on the twenty-fifth. Um, so a couple of those things we've already discussed. We'll have that ILA coming, um, with the changes to, um, uh, the, how the fourteen oh six dollars are done. So it's more centralized, a little less bureaucratic. Um, and it's not each individual jurisdiction approving how that funding gets spent. Um, as I shared earlier, the funding came together for the, um, the Lansdale Apartments project. So that's very exciting. Uh, we also talked about our priorities for, um, the RFP that's coming out this month. Um, we also, uh, got an update on, uh, recruitment for the advisory board that are gonna serve the RHC and, um, Darian, Darian's gone now. But another thing that she's done for us is she's gone to a lot of different organizations to recruit interest in that, um, including service providers, um, you know, talking to community members and also going to places like the Chamber of Commerce to get interest in participating on those, uh, advisory committees. So, um, those appointments are going to be before us at the next RHC meeting. Um, yeah, and that's my report.
All right. Do you need questions for council member Madron? All right. So now I'm gonna go to my far left. I'm gonna go to council member Cooper.
Play a game and see if you can keep, keep track as you go, right? Thank you, Mayor Zeldi. I just have one item and that's that I've been spending a lot of time, uh, learning about my new assignment, uh, as on the Economic Development Council Board. And that's been fascinating. A lot of depth and pieces. I, I, I described it like a, um, oh, I can't remember what, how I described, but there's just a lot of moving parts. And, and it's, it's a lot to learn. And so, I appreciate council member Quinn for helping me, get me up to speed and the folks that have gone before me. Um, I, I did attend last, last week, a meeting, the board meeting. Um, and the, you know, budget and, and some of the normal annual, annual things. But the thing I wanted to lift up for this city council was the, um, they had a presentation from the Port of Tacoma, uh, talking about the comp plan, docket amendment application that they've put in at the county to rezone the Maytown property back to industrial. If you remember, the county commission moved it from industrial to one over twenty. So rural residential, one home per twenty acres. Uh, and, and it does have a gravel mine o, on the property. Uh, and, and I believe at the point of the rezone, the city council supported the commission in, in asking to keep that land from being developed and, and preserve the existing forest, uh, within their, their power. Um, so I just wanted to let you know that, that, that is on the, on the agenda for the board of county commissioners. The, uh, the fourteenth of February is the deadline for putting in comment. Um, the EDC will be putting in a pro comment, asking the commission to consider that, that docket application. Uh, and then I guess if the, the city wanted to put in any other kind of comment, it would be up to us. But I do wanna encourage people, if they have personal thoughts, to, um, let the county commission know what they think. Um, the presentation was really focused on restarting and re-energizing, you know, a big investment the public, uh, you know, public sector has made, uh, down there and trying to figure out what to do with it. You know, they're framing it as, you know, an environmental and industrial opportunity that, you know, the county needs that land for its habitat conservation plan. Uh, and, and you know, we, we'd hate to have to, you know, fully mine the gravel mine permit and some other, you know, what I'll, what I'll call threats in the process of the presentation. So, um, if we don't make a statement, I think it's important for us just to all kinda watch that conversation.
Any questions for council member Cooper? All right. We're gonna stay on the left for a while. So, council member Quinn.
Always love hanging out with you on the left.
I'm in the middle, always.
So, oh, right. So, uh, the, um, it was my first meeting, um, as chair of community livability and public safety. And, uh, uh, of course, we have the same community members as last year and we just all met in high spirits. We had such a good groove going. Oh my gosh, I was just gonna say, if you'll remember at retreat when we were doing assignments, we got ours and we immediately started dancing and then there's some dance going on here. So, it's gonna be a really fun year. Uh, I won't go through our work plan, um, that was mentioned, uh, earlier. Um, uh, we did get, um, a, a presentation on reimagining public safety recommendations and what it looks like for implementation this year, um, as well as, um, an update from, uh, Toby Hill Meyer on the community discrimination assessment project. Um, the assessment is being created as a reminder and then, uh, will be dove out. Um, uh, we will, um, get more information on that, uh, as it continues. Um, we are also taking more special meetings this year, uh, special public meetings, um, to seat, uh, uh, new advisory board members. Um, and then as well as, uh, the, um, cultural access, uh, which I believe is gonna be called Inspire Olympia, um, uh, a body of people as well. Um, and so, just like last year, this is, um, a lot of extra hours, um, you know, more days and nights. Um, and so, just a really big gratitude in advance, uh, for staff. And then my, uh, committee mates, um, that'll, uh, that'll be joining me in this. We're doing, uh, a mix of virtual and then also in person. Um, and, uh, I'll say, you know, we do a lot of work. Um, and you don't necessarily always have to schedule those extra meetings and, and, uh, and, and try to get in, you know, more and more interviews. And I think as a result, what we saw last year was, um, was a more diverse, uh, advisory, um, bodies in all of the appointments we made. So, um, and, and diverse in all the ways. So, uh, I think it's well worth the time, but I thank you in advance for that. Um, one of our, one of the items that we'll be visiting, um, is, uh, the youth council and what that's gonna look like for Olympia. Um, and, uh, just last week, we had our youth council kickoff, um, with, uh, our contracted, um, contractor, True Collusion. They're a fabulous group of folks, um, that are so multifaceted. Um, and then we also have some city staff and then, uh, some youth advisors. Um, and, uh, I'm, I just am reminded of like not only the excitement of, uh, doing a project like this, but also, um, I think the youth advisors not only add a lot of smart voice and, um, perspective, but they also add a lot of levity and just overall good energy, you know? And, uh, I mean, it could be anything from like, a little bit of slang to, to like, uh, ducking off camera cause your mom came in the room. And it's just like so sweet and it just makes things really, just really fun and shakes up, I think, government in a really good way. Um, and they also, uh, uh, so sweet, uh, uh, Susan had let them know that we would be, um, giving them stipends, so essentially paying for them for their time, um, like we do our, uh, other advisory, uh, board, uh, and committee members. And, um, one of them said, I think in the best way, uh, he said, "I'm not sure how to say it, um, you know, the right way, but I just wanna say thanks for the money." And that's just, uh, so funny and also sweet and just a reminder of, um, you know, how much, uh, compensating people and showing them that we value them, even, you know, however much we can, really does matter. Um, and then, the last thing I had is, um, something to sort of, uh, get you thinking. If you have something for me right now that's quick, um, I'll take it. But, um, you know, if not, then I'd love for you to get ahold of me and share your thoughts. So, I will be, I believe on February sixth, I will be having my first, uh, meeting of this type uh, with the police auditor and then also our assistant, um, city manager, Debbie Sullivan. And doing the first of our quarterly meetings, uh, with her in this format. If you'll remember at the retreat, we had discussed having the chair of community livability and public safety attending those. So, um, of course, the council will, uh, get updates as well from the police auditor throughout the year. Um, but just, uh, trying to figure out, you know, how can I be useful in that space other than sitting and listening, right? And then keeping our, uh, council values and priorities at the, the front and center all the time. But what exactly, you know, how would it be useful for me to be in that space? And what do you need, um, as a colleague in me? So, uh, yeah.
Can we think about it and let you know, unless you have something right off the top of your head?
Yeah, quick. If you have something quick.
Nothing quick.
Okay. Um, but it's just something I'm thinking about. Um, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Any questions for council member Quinn? All right. Council member Partially.
Um, I have two things to report. The first is the finance committee, uh, meeting, first of the year. And that we welcomed our new committee member, uh, council member Madron. And while we didn't dance, we have the more concise name for our committee, which is Finance. Very short, very understandable. But, um, in our agenda, we of course had our, um, snapshot, which is just basically what is the budget calendar. And then we talked about our work plan, which you've already heard about. The last two things I do wanna talk about because I think they shine a light on, um, well, I guess how well our staff does when something goes wrong and how they actually turn it into a positive. We had last year a loss of a substantial amount of money due to fraud and it was a long game fraud, somebody very, very sneaky who worked through our automated pay system. The good news on that is two things. Uh, this was found not to be an individual's fault, but a system fault. And we got about two-thirds to three-quarters of it paid back in our, uh, insurance. What I really wanna focus on is how the finance department acted. It's one thing to make a mistake, but it's another to come out of it looking better. They did an internal audit. They reported to the state audits, auditor's office. They reported to the state audits auditor's office, and they did their own review of everything. And what they have come up with now is a series of written protocols and policies for these kinds of payments, and they, we've never had them before, and now we do. I'm pretty impressed. And they have an internal auditor's audit team that they've put in place that will be looking at future processes as well to try to prevent this. Until it happens, you don't know you have a weakness, essentially. And Aaron B. Miller and his team did a phenomenal job to, you know, take this and say, okay, what can we learn from it? And so much so that the state auditors closed the book on it and moved forward and said we did adequate work on it. But just be aware, we might see a finding due to this in the 2022 audit, but they're not concerned because they liked our process. The second thing that I want to point out, actually came in reports, and it's one more time, a shout out to staff, in particular our city manager, and his works that he has been doing with the Parks Advocates and PrAC on finding, making sure we have sustainable funding for parks. He had the idea with Maria Ruth that potentially we could bring forward to PrAC and then council a resolution that states our commitment to works with parks to find a way to have sustainable funding in the future for that department. And so you'll be seeing that in the future on a consent probably next week. There you go. I gotta, I gotta give a lot of credit to Aaron B. Miller and Jay for coming up with this. I think it's a really nice solution, so just want to say that. Now, my other one, bear with me, I have a new electronic toy, is the climate, regional climate, I can do this one without the notes. The Regional Climate Steering Committee met for our retreat that we had been planning since August. And essentially what we wanted to achieve in this retreat was a, shall we say, a little bit of a shakeup on the structure of what's going on and how we are managing the plan and making sure the plan is fulfilled and that all of our jurisdictions meet that actions. And I'm going to quote two things. One is from the staff member from Tumwater, who's there sustainability. She said that our plan was built before we had staff in each jurisdiction to handle climate. So we built a plan and a system that was assuming that the Thurston Regional Planning Council would be the staff. Well, that's not what's happening. So now we need to build a new system that is staff-driven, because most of the successful jurisdictions, that's how they do their climate work. And since we can leverage a very good working group between the county, Tumwater, our own Dr. Brath and her staff, and Lacy's future hired sustainability staff member to be able to drive a lot of the actions, we will be taking the steering committee to quarterly, including one meeting at a yearly retreat where we get education as well as defined priorities. This will mean we'll be changing the ILA, and that will be coming back to council, but it was unanimously accepted by the steering committee, and the staff were very happy with the outcome. The role of TRPC in the future will probably be facilitator, manager of the web, and potentially helping out with the community action work group from those who serve on that committee. But it will primarily be a staff collaboration, and the regional group will be for policy and regional policies and bringing back to our jurisdictions actions. So if you have any questions, let me know. We are also discussing the remaining work items that were not completed yet and whether we will be paying for them or not. So that will be coming in our next meetings.
Any questions for Councilmember Partially? It makes a lot of sense now that we all have staff in our different jurisdictions that they take a look at how to really, what do you call it? Operationalize the plan? That, that's the 2023 word. Operationalize. All right. I'm going to go to our mayor pro tem.
Thanks.
I'm just kidding.
Make some, make somebody wait. I know, you make a comment, you gotta wait. So the, the first thing I want to say is I've, I've been really appreciating being the understudy to Councilmember Madron on both land use and the regional housing this year so far. And a highlight of last week for me was in preparation for the, the Regional Housing Council meeting that she described with that, the funding for that apartment complex. We met with Housing Director Lightfoot and her recently hired expert on affordable housing finance, Jacinda Stelches, who set us up with the bullet points that led us to pretty successfully navigate having all four local governments be in support of that proposal, have them use the regional housing resources to go havesies with us on the local match that's required for the, the tax credit work. So it was, it was both a joy to meet her on her first day of work and here at the city, and, and to be so well-prepared as we went into that meeting. So that was, to me, that was a highlight of the week. I was also, I was asked by Disability Rights Washington to attend a, a press media event that Governor Inslee and Marco Leas from the legislature put together about pedestrian safety measures that are in the legislature. And it was, it was both exciting to be there, but what was cool was that I got to brag about the things that we've done and that we're doing. And even like Seattle folks, like the Capital Bicycle Club were like, hmm, you know, or not Capital, I can't, or the Washington Bicycle Association, whatever they are, you know, Seattle people were like, tell us more about what you've done in Olympia. So that felt really good. And I have to tell you all, because I've had the stra, not strangest, but the most amazing email communication this week. I, I had a constituent reach out and say, could you please tell me more about what it's like to be on city council? Yeah, do you want to do an email or coffee? He said, well, I'm in third grade. Well, do you want to walk around the playground? How does this work? And so this person said, well, my social studies meets on Wednesdays from 9:00 to 10:00. That'd be a good time.
He emailed me too. Are you going?
Yeah. So I said, I'll, I'll come to the, the Orla office a little bit before 9:00. Said, great, I'll meet you at the office. And, and so I reached out, and I'd never heard from a, a school staff person, just this third grader who's like, I'm setting this up. And I can't wait to tell you what happens next week, right? But I got a call on the way into the council meeting this evening from a teacher saying, you know, he was very reluctant to share his emails with me, and he just set up what we're going to do for social studies tomorrow. So there, there may be a future council member in the third grade class at Orla right now.
Youth council. Certainly on the youth council.
Yes. I'll, I'll be anxious to share more next week.
Oh, my gosh. I told him I'd bring a PowerPoint on March 1st. Maybe I should check with the, the teacher. All right. The Councilmember Payne.
Yes. So just over the past few weeks, it's been a cup, busy, but a few items here. So first of all, I want to thank Leonard and Tim for a great first meeting on the Council of Neighborhood Associations MOU. I thought that that was a, a great start. I felt like we got somewhere with that, so things are developing and moving along, so there'll be more of the share in, in the coming weeks. But we did have a conversation about, you know, meeting frequency, council versus staff capacity, those kinds of things, roles in terms of community engagement and, and expectations around that, so there'll be more to come there. I also met with the Law and Justice Council for our first meeting of the year. And remember, we changed our schedule from a quarterly meeting to a bi-monthly meeting schedule for this year. One of the things I really want to highlight from that meeting is specifically because data is one of the things that is part of our reimagining public safety recommendations. And one of the questions that was asked is how do we, as a region, build a data warehouse? And this is something that the council has been looking into, and so it has formed a data subcommittee to do this work. And so the membership of this subcommittee is essentially, the, the point is to sort of break down the silos of the data. So our courts, our clerks, our sheriff's offices, our, or our pre-child services offices, all of those entities that have data, how can we consolidate that to be more useful to the region in terms of various reasons we might use it? So looking forward to, to seeing how that will develop. And lastly, I, you know, I also met with the Ole Fed Board and gave them a, an extensive presentation where I felt like I talked way too much for about a half an hour, just on all of the different things that we've been doing as a city staff. I gave you high praise and really talked about that 83% accomplishment for 2022, so no pressure. But I went over some things like our, our housing and homelessness response, which Darian, I, I think it would be great for you to be connected to the board chair and the president and to have that relationship with them. Affordable housing is their jam, and it's your jam. And so it'd be good for them to know you and, and to have that connection. So happy to facilitate that. Also went into conversations about our downtown and what we're doing there, increasing the staffing of our OPD coming back together, things like that, seeing more of a presence in our downtown, going over things like that with them, discussions around the DID and their role in that as a ratepayer and things of that nature. They had some questions about West Bay Yard, so I filled them in on the status there and what's going on. I talked extensively about Olympia Strong and what's happening in that space. I think that potentially what comes out of that, they may have a role in, in helping us respond to some of the findings there. And, and really just all around, just gratitude to them for being a partner with us as a city. And, you know, I'm really looking forward to building a, a greater relationship with them. I think that's what they also want. They made it very clear that they are looking, we have an existing relationship, but they, I think they're really looking forward to be stronger and to have a, a bigger role. So it'd be great to, to see that come about. And then lastly, I just want to make sure that I thank the chief for your statement at the beginning of the meeting. I really appreciate you joining the ranks of hundreds of departments across the country in the condemnation of what's happened. And I, and I also just kind of want to speak to or expand on my thought of what I was saying earlier about race. This is what we mean by systemic racism. It is a system. And so the race of the officers, you know, being the same as, as, as the victim, this is why anti-racism work and equity work is so critical and so important, because it is systemic. And these things happen regardless of all of our backgrounds. We become victims of it, we become perpetrators of it, and it just infiltrates itself throughout everything that we do. And so this is a time for us to really reckon with that and think about what it is that we need to do to make sure that this stops happening. But I do know that every time this happens, those of us who, you know, I, I just feel that it just could easily be me or anybody I know that looks like me, and I have to do that every single time that this happens. And it's just really unfortunate, and that's why I can't watch the video yet. I don't know if I will. I might someday. But I really, really just want to thank the community who has expressed their solidarity and support for those of us who, who they know it's affecting deeply and on another level in this community. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilmember Payne? All right. We're going to go to our city manager report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing to report.
All right. With no further business, for the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.